Yep, your additional copies of minutes.
Uh, here's one, who wants?
Here.
That's the, um, that's the sign with.
Oh, it is, sorry.
Do do.
Okay, we'll bring the meeting to order and we'll start with the roll call.
Cindy Pecos, full member. Nancy Knight, member.
Terry Waite, member.
Wendy Rathgaber, member.
Bill Larson, ex officio.
Okay, we do have a call on, so we'll be all set here. We'll start with the review and acceptance of last month's meeting minutes.
A couple, I have a couple of things in the paragraph for the town core group and perhaps I didn't explain it very well. When we're talking about the numbers, but line starting on 136, discussion followed on 137, assumed that utilities under the present sidewalk would need to be moved and as a result, the cost we better estimate at 300,000 for option B. The 300,000 was actually including the signage. We don't know anything about the utilities under there and what potential impact that could have on the cost. So the 300,000 is a correct number as an estimate, including the signs, but not addressing the utilities. If that makes it more clear. And then line 142, it's 10 feet, no, 10 inches. Really wide sidewalk.
So from listening to what you just said, the, it's actually in, we go to 137 there.
Yep.
I think the discussion follow concerning the plans and Wendy added that it was assumed that utilities under the present sidewalk across would need to be moved, just saying that you assumed otherwise.
No, we assume they would need to be moved, we just don't know what is entailed with that. We have no idea of cost or exactly where the utilities are. These are just in reference, Jim Mayhew, excuse me, had indicated when we were meeting that there are utilities under there.
Well, then I think, I think we ought to make a statement that, that clearly identifies that we believe there are utilities to be moved, but no estimate was made of the cost of doing that.
Exactly. Right.
Or included in the estimate.
But the 300,000 number that was included includes a contingency that hopefully will address the utilities.
Right.
It's not, we didn't leave them 100 percent to be, to be added to the price of the project.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, if that's the case, if I've misunderstood that, then we should have a different number.
Yeah, right. I mean, if we, if we're assuming utilities have to be moved, we ought to be including some money to make it happen.
Because we can't just raise the money after 100.
Right, otherwise, what are you gonna do? You're gonna, you're gonna start and get stopped?
That's right, we would stop after stopping.
No, I know, that, that was the whole crux of the problem, why I was concerned that we were looking at both sides, because we don't know. Jim Mayhew had brought it up, that he thought that they were there at a certain depth, but wasn't sure what that depth was.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to Jim about that.
Right.
Because the 300,000, I thought was our, including our estimate for the actual signage, not the utility work.
Right. Right. I agree, that it includes the signage as well.
Oh, it does, absolutely, that, that is, but I thought there was a large enough contingency in there that we could address the utilities.
Yeah, I guess that's what I know.
I'll have to talk to Jim about that, why you brought that up.
I'll clarify that statement, anyway, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just say we need to evaluate the budget to make sure that we have, we're requesting enough to do the project. Now needs to be part of the discussion during the meeting.
Yes.
Anybody need any further time to review the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
As am, as amended.
As amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Okay, the minutes have been accepted as amended, and it's kind of an open amendment, because we'll have to find out what that number is going to be or how it's applied. Okay, we have a public hearing with regard to the proposed zoning amendments for 2018 town meeting. Like to open the public hearing now. Mark, do you have, are you gonna present anything or something to the?
No, I, I, we have to pack.
Do we have any public?
We do not have any public, but we have noticed in the hearing and put it in the newspaper and put it on the website and posted it at the.
I'm prepared to discuss it, but in light of the fact there's nobody here.
Well, the discussion would be, would take place during the public hearing anyway, so, in case somebody walks in.
Tara's have a chance to look at it.
Yeah, a few minor things to be.
Sure, sure.
And I, because they're, questions are thought of cases, I don't think, don't panic, there's nothing, I think we'll require another hand. First thing is on the second page, 5DII. I'm thinking about how somebody might get around the no sign attached to building will be higher than the drip edge of the roof, unless you add something about excluding cupolas and similar. If I were trying to get everybody's attention, I'd add a cupola with a drip edge and push the sign on the neighboring way.
Right.
Right? And technically, I don't comply with this, the way it's quoted. Might be as simple as having comma excluding cupolas and similar.
Adornments.
Yeah, adornments, good, yeah.
Could we say that no sign attached to a building will be higher than the drip edge of the roof to which it is attached?
No, because that could be on it.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Okay.
Would you mean the?
Because you get variation in roof heights, you know, we're, you know, our, our zoning actually allows that, you know, so we say the maximum height is so many feet, but you're allowed some variation, you know, you know, as long as it's less than 10 percent of the thing, I, my, you know, I don't know what the.
How about a word like the main drip edge or the primary?
The drip edge of the main roof.
Right.
How primaries?
That's not gonna solve all your issues, because you're, you're gonna have some places where you're gonna say, what's the main roof? But I think it'll solve 90 percent of the.
Yeah, it gives the intent of what you're trying to do.
Right.
Okay.
So we'll add drip edge of the main roof.
Of the main roof. I don't think I've ever seen a sign on a cupola.
No, I, if, if the cupola had a roof with a drip edge, right, then the sign could be on the main roof next to it.
Okay, alright.
On G A, the, the last sentence, I, I think you mean, once a sign is displayed for 28 days, it must be removed. You're not allowing it to be more than.
Where are we now? Six A.
Six, six A, the last sentence of it.
Okay.
You say, once a sign is displayed for more than 28 days, but you don't allow it for more than 28 days.
Right.
So I think you meant to say, once a sign is displayed for 28 days, it must be removed.
Yeah, four, yeah, 28 days, just cross out more than.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
The next one, B.
Same one, six?
Yeah, there's just a typo in the first sentence, nine square feet.
Eight, yeah.
And then.
Eight, nine, eight, it's got foot.
And then, they should be constructed in materials that will last at least 14 days, not up to.
Okay.
Say it again, I'm sorry, Tara.
They should be constructed in materials that will last at least 14 days, is what, what you're trying to go with that.
Right, right.
Yeah, as opposed to up to.
Okay.
So that's kind of the same as saying less than, right, you're saying up to.
Yeah, okay.
In C below that, just a typo, temporary signs must be professionally lettered, yeah. On the, on the next page, I looked in the zoning ordinance itself and I didn't see a definition for site. When you say one sign per site, a single family home.
What, what number you want?
Just the first row, single family and two family homes, you say one sign per site. Is, is there gonna be any disagreement about what a site is? Could it, like, I don't, I'm not sure that I know if you mean, like, cluster homes with a goal in element or each dwelling, I don't, I don't know where you're going with site.
Well, I think they, they mean lot, like building.
Yeah, it's building site, I don't know if that'll clarify it, but, so this is completed and we have people that have combined multiple lots and built a single house on them? We tend to refer to that as a site, you know, and the intent would be, you get one sign per home that's on a site, you know, it's not per lot. You know, if we said that one sign per building lot, then you could technically get two signs, I don't, I, I, well, I don't know.
But how about we look at the definition of a building lot?
Yeah, you need something that's defined as a. What about dwelling? Do, do you mean dwelling?
Yeah, well, that's, yes, it's one sign per, I, I don't know how to, what, you know, dwelling.
Do you mean the?
Dwelling is defined as a single detached principal building. Multi-family dwelling is a detached principal building containing townhouses, condominiums. So, I'm just looking here. Lot.
It's a fine site.
A plot of land generally a subdivision of a city, town, and village block or some other distinct tract represented and identified by a recorded plat or deed, that's a lot.
So we really ought to change one sign per lot?
Then we have a defined area.
Right, okay.
So, per lot?
Doesn't that, I thought you raised a good point that it's.
Well, most, most, yeah, but most people come in and do a minor lot line adjustment, because they don't wanna pay the taxes on two lots.
Yeah.
So they combine them in the one lot and get a preferential rate. I'm not aware of anybody who has not taken, who has built across multiple lots.
There's only one.
And has not combined them.
There's only one.
There's one.
Out by you.
Tony?
Tony.
There's one on your agenda last time I was here, where they was, then trying to separate it.
So let's just say one sign per lot.
Yeah.
And then it's no confusion.
I'm just trying to kind of foresee areas that might cause confusion and confusing caused funny down the road, so you don't want that.
That's a good thing, yeah.
And then I, the other thing, well, the bottom of the table on page four, the typo, one sign for, for road access. Just need to strike the S. In the last, the last.
The residential?
Yeah, the last row on the table.
Yeah.
Where it ends on page four, it says one signs for road access.
Right.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Then I, then I'll just have a question to make sure that this was deliberate. Nine B, at the bottom of that page. I just wanted to check that you only wanted five C and D to apply, not five A and B about maintenance and lighting.
Well, I mean, we could expand it to that. Maintenance, I don't think is an issue that temporary, so after 14 days, they're, you know, 28 days at a max, they gotta be taken off anyway, right?
No, we're trying to, permanent or temporary directional sign, it's directional sign.
Oh, why the temporary, yeah.
There, I don't, I would think that directional signs, you'd want the same maintenance and lighting rules to apply. So I wasn't sure why.
Yeah, we, there's no harm in extending into all four, right, to section five.
Yeah, right, just section, section.
So just strike the S on sections.
Right.
And leave it at section five.
Right.
Good idea, yeah.
And then kind of on the very last thing on page five, similar question, I just wanted to make sure that you meant to only apply five D to temporary directional signs.
What number? Oh, okay, J, J, okay.
Just wanted to make sure that was deliberate too.
Well, and I, I would again say, I think it is intended to, to, to section five. But the question is, is it redundant?
Well, you're, you're saying five D implies I can have these prohibited lighting or sign features in B and C. I mean, like, why, why are you only saying D?
Yeah, because if you say just D, then they can have an animated sign potentially under J.
Well, and D is for permanent signs.
Yeah.
But you're saying temporary signs have to meet those criteria. So you're saying.
Oh, right, I see.
That you can have an animated sign or a lighted sign.
Right.
Which are prohibited under B and C, five B and C, but you can have those for temporary signs.
Right.
Is what you're saying, Tara, if we don't, if we don't just.
I wouldn't use it that way, yeah, I would say, oh, then I can have blinking lights to point to my event, right? A blinking arrow. Because it's temporary, I would think that your reasoning was, well, since it's temporary, I can have the flashing arrow.
Do you wanna give?
Would that change require?
That's starting to get a little bit, I mean.
I, I think it's a clarification, because you, in your mind, that was implied anyway.
Yeah.
I just think it's a clarification.
I, I'm, I'm just wondering whether, if you take a look at the change we made to B and then look at J, why we need the first couple of sentences anyway? I think we ought to say that, you know, what I'm wondering, if, if, you know, temporary directional signs are permitted but must conform to the general requirements for temporary signs in section five. But permanent or temporary, in the other one, it says, permanent or temporary directional signs could conform to the general requirements for, on private property, section five. To me, it's just saying the same thing, right?
Yeah.
J and D, and what, what the only thing that I'm interested in, in actually in J is there is a limit, and this is, and, and this may be confusing, there is a limit of three temporary directional signs per permit request, and that's intended to get around somebody wanting to put up 15 different signs in a row, you know? The event's here, the event's here.
Yeah.
You know, so that you're limited to three, but, but, you know, that's the intent. I don't know whether it's very clearly worded that way, but.
So, I mean, it, it, if you could just end it after permitted, right, then that sentence, because it, as you said, you already said that in D.
Right, yeah, we are, yeah, we could strike but must conform.
Just state temporary directional signs are permitted, period, if possible, sign should be and on.
Right.
But it's, it's.
So strike those.
Things redundant, it adds confusion.
So in the first sentence, we're striking the words but to above.
Yep.
Right.
But we're keeping if possible?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I think that was, I mean, here.
Okay.
Terry, are you okay with that?
I'm just kind of looking through this and, I don't know. You know, I'm, I'm trying to look at it from the standpoint of somebody sitting out there wanting to put a sign up and has looked at these regulations, the way we've had them posted. And then, does that make a significant difference to that person? From our point of view, no, but.
I think if you strike the letter D out of the first sentence, you can make an argument that, that you did not substantially change it.
Yeah, you look.
I think if you start.
Oh, 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 we mean, we really changed the intent.
Right.
All right, you know, we've, we've got, we can hold another public hearing, I mean, if you want to, I mean.
Well, I just went through what the difference was and I think it's covered anyway, to be honest with you. I think even if you said D, I mean, even if, like, say you didn't make that sentence that said it has to comply, it would have to comply anyway. So this, it's almost a redundant statement, but I can see why you need it. But if all the other rules apply anyway, just to state that now we're saying all the other rules apply, I don't think there's a problem. So I would say as far as fi, as nine B, probably that would not be an issue.
Right.
The other one is nine J.
Right. I, I don't think that change is, is particularly material. Nine B is a more significant change than, than deleting that must conform to the general requirements, that's just the redundancy. I mean, nine B, we're, we're now saying A and B apply as well, as C, C and D.
Right.
If, if you go to.
You could argue that, you know, that that's a material change.
If you, the way that, the correct way to change J, when you're referencing the wrong section right now, you say it must conform to the general requirements for temporary signs in section five. Section five is permanent sign.
Right, right.
Section.
Right, it's, that's why I think we should take that statement out, as you suggested, just are permitted, period, and if possible, the sign should be added to an existing sign, temporary signs are limited to nine square feet, there is a limit of three temporary directional signs per permit request.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's just wrong, it's kind of wrong.
Right, yeah, I agree.
That actually, that actually loosens the requirement anyway, so that probably wouldn't be an issue.
But I'm gonna make a suggestion anyway. It would be, I think, helpful, since we can vote on these at the next meeting, that we don't vote on these now.
Okay.
That we read them one more time.
Yeah, okay, good idea.
And proof we can make sure there aren't any other things like that, and then vote on them at the next meeting.
Can we make changes at the next meeting?
Sure.
No, not until.
No, you can.
Editorial, you can make it for.
You can make editorial, but you cannot make substantive in February.
Does that create any problem for you, Mark?
Well, unless you extend the public hearing, right? If you keep the public hearing open.
No, because.
No, because you're, we're doing the warrant.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We need the.
Yeah.
All right, good point, yeah, I hear you.
The only, I would say, don't close the public hearing right now, I, I don't want to notice, because probably we could make these changes without re-noticing and, because if we're in agreement that we're not making substantive changes, right?
Well, this, this public hearing was noticed.
This what?
So if we make changes with regard to this public hearing and don't close the public hearing, then it could be continued the next month without a notice, right?
Don't you mean in January?
Till it's December, I'm thinking, yes, we will.
But you have time to vote on it in January.
So we'll have time to vote on it in January.
Can you?
Okay, okay.
Right.
And I'll talk to town council about these changes, if he wants us to re-notice them, it's easier to put it in the paper. It's just costly.
I don't see how they'd have to be re-noticed if this, this meeting was.
Was left open.
Was published.
If, if the town council doesn't agree that they're not substantive.
Yeah, if they're substantive, you're supposed to re-notice it.
Then you, because you need to post the changes if you make substantive changes.
Right.
Nobody, nobody showed up for this meeting, how would they know to show up for the next?
Well, yeah, but I guess that's my point, you know.
And that's what I'm gonna ask him is, there's no reason to re-notice it. And so we will not re-notice it unless he says you need to, that's all.
Okay.
That'll be the only way we'll re-notice it.
So we need to make a motion to continue the public hearing till January?
That's, that's your intent, yes.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing till Jan, well, the public hearing's not closed, right?
It's just not closed, it's continued.
So I make that motion ahead of time?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to continue the public hearing till January.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is continued, is that all the issues that you had, Tara?
And, and you'll make these changes and redistribute another set, and I think we. And I think we all ought to read them one more time.
And you'll, and you'll post it?
We're gonna, we're gonna make changes. We're gonna notify with, as the town clerk, that we've made changes and give them a new comment. And then we'll check with town council as to whether or not they want us to post a new public hearing, or if they'll just take the vote you just made to continue the public hearing, and then you'll vote one way or the other in January to move the changes forward.
Right.
Just another clarification thing, anywhere we've been talking about. We talked about nine B. Permanent or temporary directional signs should conform to general requirements for signs on private property section five. But section five isn't private property.
It's just permanent signs, right.
So should we strike the private property while we're at it?
Uh, do you mean four, or do you mean, mean five?
Well, it's referring to section five. Nine B refers to section five, signs on private property.
It works for me because it's, it's it's saying you know that section five is about private property, but we want them to apply directional signs on public property anyway.
But it's not. But five isn't about private property. Four is.
Four.
Five is all permanent, well,
Most of them are, but.
it's all permanent signs.
Five is all permanent signs whether it's private or public.
All permanent signs.
Right, so I'm just saying, Laura, striking stuff that could be confusing, isn't the private property kind of confusing too? In nine B.
So.
It's unnecessary.
So instead of on private property, that, and those things should be out.
But just section five.
Can I just ask another question? I mean, on that one, you, the heading is, um, under that is permanent or temporary, and temporary is six.
Right, I understand, but that's why, rather than rewriting the same, you know, doubling the text, we, I, I said, we just refer back that the rules in five also applied to temporary.
Okay.
Otherwise, you gotta repeat all the text, which you could do. You know, I mean, you could write it all over again, but then it's exactly the same stuff.
So is the intent that conform to the general requirements for permanent signs in section five above, is that the intent of that sentence?
That's how I was reading it.
That's how I read it.
Yeah.
So.
So why don't we just make that change?
Just say that.
Okay, but I, I think, when you're saying strike private property.
I'm ninety.
Well, yes, I'm saying that too. I'm saying.
Disagree.
For to the general requirements for permanent signs
Period.
in section five above.
Okay.
So we're striking private?
Yeah.
Yes, on private property.
All right, okay.
In section five above.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Actually, I just kind of typed out, uh, in section five, D, isn't David, uh, two, or II. It's twelve by twenty-four feet, and the maximum height of a standalone sign is twenty-five feet.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, right.
All of those.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just read it. You know, you read it quickly.
Yeah.
It doesn't sink in, because I read it last night, and I just didn't even see these.
Well, for those of you who've been working on it and have read it eight times, you don't see it anymore.
Carrie, can, I know it's really redundant, but I just want to make sure that we've captured all of the changes. Can I just quickly review them that I have here?
Good, so we'll all be on the same page?
Yes.
Is there anything on page one that changed? Did I miss anything?
No.
So page two, paragraph D, sub-paragraph II, I, twenty-five feet instead of twenty-five foot. And no sign attached to a building will be higher than the drip edge of the main roof.
And then the twelve by twenty-four.
Feet, yes.
Feet, right.
Yes, sorry, so there's three changes there.
Yeah.
Okay. Then in six, C, temporary signs must be professionally lettered?
Yeah.
And.
No.
Yeah, there are two others, A and B.
A and B.
But on A, we struck out more than.
Yeah.
Right.
More than before the twenty-eight days.
Yes, okay, for twenty-eight days.
And on B, there were two, square feet, and then, um, constructive materials that will last at least.
At least.
At least fourteen.
Instead of like two.
Yeah.
That's why I was.
Right?
And then what was the third thing about?
Professionally, instead of professionally. First line of the, of the, uh, table there on page three, one sign per block. Anything else on that page? Page four, last line of the table, third box over, one sign per road.
Yep.
Right.
In paragraph nine, D, says, um, should conform to the general requirements for permanent signs in section five above. Anything else on page four? Page five, J, uh, temporary directional signs are permitted, period.
Permitted, not permitted.
Permitted, sorry.
Right.
Permitted to be permitted.
Yes.
Right, you got it.
All right?
Yep.
Good.
Well, yeah, but, right, period, right. So then you're gonna take the rest of the sentence?
The rest of that sentence is gone, and then we're keeping the other sentence.
Right. You got it.
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Boy, we should hold public hearings around crisis. I mean, the last time we had signs, we had thirty people here, right? I guess they've given up.
Okay, so the public meeting will be continued until our next meeting. We'll move on to the next item, which is, uh, old business. There's nothing on the agenda. I don't know if anybody has anything they wanna bring up.
How are we doing for alternates? Okay.
Haven't heard from anybody, huh?
I, yeah.
Did you put out a letter or anything?
No, but we have been talking to folks as they're coming in, that we have vacancies.
Okay. Well, if anybody knows anybody that might have some interest, please mention it to them.
And then about a week and a half, we'll start the open period for election, uh, sign-ups. So we can put on the website that, in addition to those positions, that we have volunteer positions that are open.
We got a period of sign-up for the, it's in January. The, the ten day.
Okay.
We'll have a list of generator.
Yes.
Um, I guess under old business, I would just like to mention that, uh, I wasn't present at the last meeting, but I did, uh, read the minutes and found that somebody had suggested, uh, rumble strips as a speed reducer out here, as a part of the entrance to the town. I, I strongly recommend you don't go with rumble strips.
No, we did that before.
They're, no, they're extremely noisy, and, uh, anybody that's above the valley floor can hear traffic coming up all the way.
I never heard, really, the sound does rise, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's, they're loud and they're very annoying. As a matter of fact, a lot of these areas along the highway where they put them, uh, along the edge, they've had to fill them in because the noise just travels so far. So I would strongly suggest that we don't do that.
So you're talking about the ones that are graded into the road?
Right.
I'm talking about the ones that are risen above, that we used to have.
Those are speed bumps.
Those are speed bumps.
All right.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out there, so, all right. Committee reports? Town core group?
The town core group hasn't yet this month. Still working on making sure that everyone's on the same page with, um, what we want to do with the improvements in the CIP.
But just update me a little bit on that, uh, the three plans that were presented at the last meeting. What, what's the status of that? What's going to be happening?
Um, Mark, you're probably no better than I, where we're at with that.
Well, the selectmen reviewed the CIP, um, at the meeting yesterday, and approved the two thousand eighteen project list that was moved forward by the planning board. So that's in our, right now, in our proposed budget, uh, that we're working on. As part of the discussion, though, we did agree, right though, that, um, the selectmen and the town core working group getting together would be a good idea.
Right.
Because there's some different ideas.
Yeah, one of the things that, that, that we talked about at the selectman's meeting would be that it's going to be difficult to sell the proposal if we simply present it as a sign and these improvements to the sides of the roadway in terms of, people need some sense of what the whole thing is gonna look like. You know, because this is just a step. And so the question becomes, what, where is the, the, where, where, where is the vision for the, for the walking network and the trail network? Because I know now there are some visions to build a pavilion and some bathrooms over by the beach. So people, you know, so the feeling was that if we're gonna sell this and just present it as a sign, there's a, you know, it's gonna be difficult, you know, people aren't gonna, well, I don't understand how that's gonna make a big difference in the town. So, uh, we want to talk to the town core group to see if they can't put together something that would present some overall vision of what this is gonna look like.
So not just looking at two thousand eighteen, but all the projects that are in the CIP.
But looking at all the subsequent years as well.
So, because there's, we, with the expanded CIP, we've got a lot of projects in there that have not been in plan before, so. So hopefully, we can have that joint meeting in the next week and try to, try to get.
In the next week? I thought it was January fourth that we were shooting for.
Oh, that, that's right, we did say it's, and to the selectman's meeting in January fourth.
Right, right.
What day? A Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
I'm not.
No, that one's a Thursday.
No, it's a Thursday.
Thursday, because, I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
Exactly, I can make.
Thursday.
If we do it at the latter end of the meeting.
We're talking about the CIP committee, I think, I think it'd be worthwhile to provide some feedback. We had a meeting yesterday with the well engineers as well. As well, yeah, right. They, 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 they don't have very good news. And, um, what it is, is nobody knows, other than why the well is misbehaving, other than it really misbehaved in the last big rainstorm. I mean, the counts went off the chart, apparent to them. We would have been better off pumping water out of the sewage treatment plant.
Oh, right.
Well, the water out of the sewage treatment plant is very clean, the discharge, it's cleaner in some respects than the ribbon, so be careful with that. So they don't know. They have some ideas of things we could do, but there's a placeholder in there for four hundred thousand dollars to make repairs to that well system. And we're gonna still ask for it, but because we don't want to delay doing it, but we don't have a specific, here's what we're gonna do yet, you know? We, we, we're, we've just got money set aside to do something.
Where is this third well that's being?
The third well is, i- if you walk upon the Mad River Trail.
Yeah.
It's the, if you start from.
Going towards your house?
No, if you, if you're, actually, it's, you run across it, if you're walking from, uh, West Branch Road on the Mad River Trail, you get this, like, a little island before you go over the stepping stone bridges.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
It's sitting on that island in there. And one of the problems right now is, is, is we, we allow complete access to the site. It's not fenced off the well or anything.
Yeah.
So one of the steps they're recommending is, is we are gonna fence that off, we're gonna put a cap on top of it so that water, one of the fears is that animal waste are actually coming down into the well at that point where the well site is, but, yeah, nobody really knows.
I remember years ago, before that, there was a huge beaver dam right in that area at one point. But was there ever, like, uh, any type of, you know, colonial resident or whatever, residents in that area? Dumping or anything, no?
No, what, what we, the, the, the feeling is that ever since Irene,
Oh.
that, that triggered a change in the river, uh, geo- you know, whatever you call it, I don't know.
Flow?
Flow that has ultimately led to some degradation of that particular well. Just thank God, well number two doesn't seem to be doing the same thing. But just so you know, from where we are from the CIP, we're gonna ask for a lot of money without much idea of what we're gonna spend it on. We're just keeping our fingers crossed.
Is there a point at which you'd abandon that well and do another one?
That's a lot, it, to, yes, well, I don't think we'd ever abandon the site. There, one of the options is to, is to replace it with a modern well. To dig all the well out and replace it with an up, you know, with a new well, which is better sealed and everything else, and less subject to ground, you know, to, to surface water contamination.
Yeah, I've been finding a site for that fourth well at the beginning.
Well, right, they, they drilled, what was it, a hundred and nineteen wells to get that one? So in spite of the fact we call this Waterville Valley, there isn't a lot of water under the ground.
Since the nineteen sixties.
Wow.
Between the Waterville Company and the town, we drilled over a hundred and ninety test wells.
So we don't want to go looking for a new site, because we're pretty convinced it's not in the valley floor.
Right.
So we're hoping that we can find a way to fix this well. Now, it's not a crisis. Between two and four, we have more water today than we did when we only had two and three.
Oh, wow.
So, but we, we have no backup, is the problem. There's no redundancy, which is the reason we drilled four to begin with, so we need to get three back online.
Okay. Uh, we'll go on to communications. Sharon, Carrie, do we have any communications? Okay, nothing in the technical file?
Unless, unless that's where you want to, kind of, talk about the zoning work for the coming year?
Sure.
Okay. I think, um, we wanted to touch base on whether your goals are the same, as when we talked about it last. I think what started the, the big picture zoning modification was your pedestrian village revitalization study and trying to look at the zoning to see if you can change parking density, lighting, to implement some of that plan. And when we did the big kind of housekeeping cleanup of the zoning, there were some uses that we talked about that people didn't really remember why they were allowed or not allowed in certain districts, so we wanted to take a comprehensive look at that. Does that still sound like what should be on the table for the coming year?
Yeah, it was my understanding that we were gonna try to get a little more organized with regard to the review of the, uh, ordinance and pick out particular such, sec- rather than review the whole thing, pick out particular sections such as parking, and work on that.
Parking, well, parking density, lighting, and uses were the categories that
Right.
had planned to focus on in the last year and.
One I would like to add to it is, um, the, you know, the definition of what requires a, um, a site
Right.
plan review and what doesn't. That's been very confusing. I think it's been difficult for none of the developers, but the, the public as well as the, the board, because I think it, the definition is rather cloudy.
And it really gets into, right, I think we've agreed now that, that pretty much almost anything requires a site plan review other than a modification to a single-family home. And our question is, is that res- you know, that seems to be heavy-handed.
Well, you can't require a site plan review for a single-family home or a.
No, we exclude those.
Yeah.
But everything else, we require it, pretty much, and, um, even if it's just an alternate use of the property. And, and we're saying, gee, is that. And, and we're saying, gee, is that getting kind of heavy-handed here from the...
Yeah, the thing is, it refers to development and improvement. And I, I think that, that, that those are pretty flexible terms, and they're not well-defined, I don't believe, for the use in this, in the ordinance. So something, I mean, the question got brought up, well, what if you're gonna be putting in a frisbee?
Right.
Or a platter golf course, you know, does that require a, a site review? You know, one of the words used was improvement, and that's if you were gonna improve the, increase the value of the property as a result of the, the activity. Well, does it improve, increase the value? Probably, because it gives you something else to do on that land. But does it really require a site review? Doesn't disturb very much, so something like that is, I think, is, it's not a very big item, but it requires a lot of thought.
Well, and we haven't been consistent in the way we've been doing it because town square, if you look at town square today, just at the first floor of all of the buildings, they are, I can't think of a single space in there, except for the office space, that is the same as when that was approved. Every, every space in there, the use has been changed. Right, so they've gone from a retail store space to a restaurant space or whatever. In none of those instances have you required site plan review.
No, but I think in most cases, we did at least talk, was this an allowed use?
No, they, they, no, Bill, they, they have not come in to the planning board with any of those changes.
No, I know. No, but I, I, I think we do it by exception, in the sense that we talk about it, and if we felt it wasn't an allowed use, we notified them that they were violating the zoning. I mean, the only one that comes to mind is, is when Preston wanted to build this little water tower. You know, and we said, well, you know, that, there's not an allowed use to build that thing. But they would have just gone ahead and built it.
The first ski jump.
Yeah, the ski jump.
You know, you're not trying to...
I'm talking about the actual...
Right, I hear you. I know, I know.
But if you look at the definition of site plan review, the change of use of those, they have different parking requirements, they have different...
Right.
You know, health and safety requirements, but we have not required site plan review in those cases. We've just said, oh, it's town square, they can do whatever they want. But then, like you pointed out, on another site for the frisbee golf, we were talking about requiring them to come in for a site plan review for that. So there's no consistency in, it's just, you know, we, we need to define it a lot better as to what we're gonna require site plan review for.
Yeah, particularly for your purposes, because you're the first one they go to.
Yeah.
And they say, do I need to get a permit for this, right, so.
Well, sometime, well, no, then they're coming in for a building permit.
No, but Chris...
Or they're just changing the use and saying, you know, we're, we're putting in a restaurant.
I've been trying to hop in here because that, that doesn't go in zoning.
No, it's site plan review.
Yeah.
What we were talking about was one amendment you want to look at in the zoning for the coming year. That was the project. And the zoning or a separate town meeting or an article authorize the planning board to have site plan review regulations. But then those regulations are where you have exceptions and lay out the thresholds and that. And I'm, I'm happy to work with you on that as well, if that's what you're asking. But just to be clear, that's not part of the zoning amendments.
Yeah, I think, I understand that, but yes, I'd like to, in my personal opinion, I'd like you to take a look at that and, I mean, you've had experience in a lot of different towns, how they handle it.
Yeah, I've written a number of section.
It's not a big section, it's just, it's the purpose, basically, it's the purpose of the planning.
Just trying to make clear what, what our scope was here.
Yeah.
So, and I'm not, I mean, I never write an agreement that's narrow either. It's gonna say to include, but not limit it to these zoning topics. The, so the other thing, what we were trying to do last year, what people were tied up with other things in the summer, is to really have this work and have consensus and know where you're going and have time for public meetings, you really need to plan probably an hour and a half long discussion every month for about, say, four months. Whether that's a separate meeting date, or when you're done with your other business, you take a break and then have a workshop-type meeting. But I'd say it's, it's four months of rolling up these leaves for an hour and a half every month in order to be ready for, for the public.
And we, when we had talked about our strategy for that, we had said we should do it during our regular meetings, but do it first.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to start out during the regular meetings.
I like that idea.
There's nothing on the, in the next few months that's outstanding as far as a lot of issues.
I'd rather have you fresh than wanting to be done and...
We may change that as time goes on if we get over a burden with...
Then, then the other question is just when do you want to start? I don't have a lot of conflict, so I time it eight in the morning.
Well, I, I don't have any problem starting it in January, but...
Great.
Finished, we, we need to finish the zoning amendments for eighteen. Because what we're talking about right now are zoning amendments for nineteen.
The only zoning amendments we have right now are the ones from the side.
Right.
Right.
That's right. I'd rather focus on get those so that we're settled on those and then...
I think it's a good point, so start in February.
February, yeah.
I'm gonna make one other note of something that, as you go through this and read it. We have a fair amount in the zoning talks about trailers and whether they can or can't be used. It, it talks to trailers in the sense that they're boat trailers and they're home trailers. The question is, what do we do with storage trailers? We just approved the storage trailer, and the zoning is absolutely silent. And I'm not sure those rules apply to storage trailers and...
I'm not even sure you call it a storage trailer, it's a storage box. It's not really on wheels.
Well, yeah, it's a box. But the question is, does it meet, I don't know whether it met the definition of a, of a, you know, quote, has to have a roof. Well, it's got a roof. You know, so we're a little weak in that area, and I'm not even sure what we want. You know?
It's hard to be that that one gets set.
But anyway, just make a note.
So we're picking up on the uses.
Yeah, when you get to that section, we'll, we need to address that.
It isn't?
Well, go look at it, see if it meets what you were envisioning.
I would like to see it level and closer to the building, especially right up to close to the type of building. Temporary, perhaps.
It's free.
Have, have you heard any complaints, Mark, since it was put in?
No, they haven't been up yet, probably.
Not unless, not unless they've been at the coyote on Thursday.
He's the only one that's been there.
We were the only one there last Thursday.
Yeah.
Good special treatment, that was good.
So I'm waiting, so I'm waiting until everybody else is around.
Any other details you need from the board in order for us to do a contract?
No, I, I think we're talking the four months starting in February, and we're gonna take those three topics that she had.
Yep.
The uses would be very helpful to us.
Parking density, lighting, and uses, you know, will have the site plan for sure. So maybe add, maybe we'll see five, because I can see the site plan being a detailed discussion.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
All right, can we...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mark, eleven o'clock, right? I'll, I think I'll head on home.